So far, I think we've found some really good opportunities to avoid conflicts, but also take advantage of building improvements that we can integrate solar into that would have less of an impact on the existing site and actually reduce the amount of the new solar that you saw at last meeting proposed on some of the buildings. So our plan is to bring that back in November to continue that discussion and appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Vickers. So we're looking forward to our next negotiation session with La Buffalo happening next week in hopes of reaching a tentative agreement for the 24-25 school year. And the certificate goal setting process is underway, so the principals work with staff during their evaluation year, but then the HR department, tech department, instructional services, we team together and we collect goals from staff in their non-evaluation year. And then from there, we analyze the goal topics and we align our PD offerings to these topics and also connect our in-house experts with the staff so they have those internal resources to support them as well. And as I shared previously, my HR team provides, we provided the site office staff with professional development in August around building effective teams. So coming up this October, we're going to be in the process of scheduling our site office takeover. So we take over the office, allows the team to be able to have that time to come together and have that and have those meetings. So we're going to be working with them to tackle priority projects, also looking at an opportunity for cross-training because a lot of times you don't have that opportunity, but especially when you lose a member for a week or so and want everyone else to be able to pick up the slack in that. So it's going to be good that we're going to be able to provide that for them. And then we're also, coming up in the fall, we're visiting every school site to show, during lunch, to show our gratitude. This year, we sent out a this or that theme. So we sent a survey out to staff, gathering their likes in the categories of sweet or sour, coffee or tea, minty or fruity, and then we'll bring those personalized gifts to the staff when we come visit them at lunch. And so our goal is to put a face to the name because a lot of times my staff is only communicating over the phone or via email. We also share frequently asked questions and leave QR codes that gives them links to the resources that we have available on the website and Canvas. And that's all for my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Valoria said, just was excited to kind of share some of the news around the test scores that the students had last spring. I know a lot of work and effort goes into that from everybody and all of our students, staff and parents. So that's always good news to see that growth and looking through that lens. And then again, the think that the parents and the staff for their partnership this week at the elementary level, going through the goal-setting conferences with parents and families. It's such an important piece to build that empowered learner, to empower students to build agency and have that strong self-identity that they are doing this goal-setting. Typically, that is a goal around literacy, math, and social. And that takes on a different form at the upper grades, not during this week, but they'll often look through what they call data chats, where they might be setting some goals around ELA literacy or sorry, literacy and math, as well as working with their counselors around goal-setting, especially around the four-year goal, or sometimes they call that a six-year goal, they start thinking around post-secondary. And then, as they talked about earlier, good professional development coming this week at the middle of the high school. Takes on different forms when you have a shorter window, like the high school working through their WASC accreditation process, that nice hour and a half, two-hour window is a nice snippet to kind of get some of that work in with the whole staff without having to take a whole day. So it really fits well, different type of professional learning rather than a whole day. So just appreciate the staff doing that work and the partnership with the parents around different schedules that are going on this week. But as you can hear, a lot going on around the campuses last month, so appreciate everybody sharing those events.
Thank you. Our next report is a principal's report, and it's Principal Thurston, Mr. Vidal.
Good evening, Board. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to showcase Thurston tonight. As I was reflecting a little bit, I was realizing that I am now going into my fifth year as principal here at Thurston Middle School, which is hard to believe. And I would say, although the pandemic seems like a very distant memory, probably because of a defense mechanism that I have, but it seems like yesterday that I was walking onto this campus. And I just want to say that I continue to love this school. I love the role that I have in supporting our kids, and I'm excited to share some updates with you about the work that we're doing here on our campus. This slide always serves as a reminder of how our LCAP goals serve as a nice scaffold for us here at the school site and allowing us the opportunity to make site-specific decisions around the needs of our students within the context of our school. And I intend to share how some of these areas are supported here at TMS this year. Under the umbrella of college and career readiness, I would like to briefly highlight some of our newfound ideas that we have around strengthening our work around the learner profile, sharing a snapshot of our initial I-ready results around English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then how those snapshots guide our enrichment and targeted interventions that we have on our campus. And then finally, kind of taking a step back and looking at the comprehensive services and supports that we provide our kids, and also the quality of work and the quality of people that are delivering them. I'm also excited to share how we're being re-designated as a schools-to-watch. Last year, our staff did a phenomenal job taking the learner profile and transforming it into tangible classroom learning experiences. Essentially, our teachers took a list of instructional strategies and concrete learning experiences that they will utilize within their classroom environments to enhance the learner profile outcomes for all of our kids. Then they designed these learning experiences. We use these tools for learning walks where teachers, observe teachers practicing these strategies. We also used it for our units of study work, thank you to Mike Morrison and his team, as well as other supportive frameworks like teacher goal-setting processes and guidelines to help within department planning. Once those things were in motion, we then began to think that, how are we going to be able to capture these competency-based skills, which is limited with traditional tests and quizzes? Which led us to this idea of creating digital student portfolios, something that we're looking forward to piloting this semester. Again, thank you to Mike Morrison and the instructional team. These digital portfolios would be a nice place where students could highlight those classroom projects, exhibit their best work around being, whether it was an empathetic citizen, or an effective communicator, or other related outcomes. And thus far, we have over a dozen teachers kind of tinkering around with different digital platforms to test in hopes of finding the best method to showcase this work for our kids. As we transition over to our ELA academic performance indicators, we see that similar trends with our results as we did last year at the beginning of the year. And we know to expect this as students typically are being exposed to new grade-level content, which typically takes a school year to master. And based on what we see, we're projecting an improvement in our outcomes last year, especially as we take into account some of the newfound universal instructional practices, like our ongoing push to increase reading across our school, which will help bolster our year-end results, something I will share in the upcoming slides. Similar with math, looking at our math performance indicators, we also see a similar trend between last year's beginning-of-year data as well as this year's beginning-of-the-year data. And like ELA, I'm also excited to share a few instructional changes that we're going to be making to support our students, which will be on this following slide. For Tier One enrichment practices, we are currently partnering with School Power and our PTA to create additional extended learning opportunities for our kids. One example of this would be our newfound cultural and musical enrichment experience, where musicians come to our campus, educate students about various cultures, discuss the origins of their music, perform for our students, and then invite students to perform alongside them through coaching and practice. The latest being the expiration of Peruvian percussion instruments, where we had over 60 students participating during lunch and an additional 70 students who observed or participated alongside our musicians during our tutorial period. Additionally, we are currently planning for career exploration field trips, where students will take field trips to different career industries and learn what it's like in the day in the life of a journalist, or a software engineer, or an athletic trainer, or other industry offerings. We are currently building those partnerships right now as we speak, and we look forward to unveiling some of those experiences in the spring of this year. Looking at intervention, our math teachers have recently configured or reconfigured the way in which they will be utilizing tutorial this year, and separating students who might just need assignment completion versus those who actually need reteaching of content. So rather than trying to address all of those needs within one space, they're going to be helping students reteach in one classroom versus helping with executive functioning and making up assignments in another. In addition to that, they're also tinkering with a new I-ready intervention curriculum, which will be used with fidelity across their sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classes. And then, as I mentioned to you guys before, about sometimes the difficulty of getting students to participate in those intervention classes, we are also looking to utilize those intervention materials within our tutorial period as well. For our ELA teachers, and as previously mentioned in my end-of-the-year report, they are on the cusp of rolling out our book clubs in the next few weeks, and have a variety of student-chosen novels which have just arrived on our campus. And as a reminder, book clubs are places where students choose their own novel, which is in addition to their core novels of study, and have peer-to-peer discussions about themes within those novels and dissect different interpretations of the text while getting additional exposure and practice within our ELA standards. In fact, a few of our teachers are also looking for ways to increase parent volunteerism by having parents within the community come and help facilitate some of those book club circle discussions, which will offer more authentic experiences with our kids while increasing the parent engagement that we're all looking for, which is another goal that I will share a little bit about shortly. And finally, our ELA teachers are in the midst of a strong partnership with our high school team as we look to explicitly teach how artificial intelligence can be used as a tool to help students with their writing, not replace it, but help them with those skills they need to bolster as they're navigating the complex writing at the secondary level. And we also look forward to those collaborations in the next few weeks. For Goal Two, I'm excited to share with you our focus beyond PBIS and the continuation of our work to strengthen school connectedness on our campus. And in addition, after a year or so of discussing and planning, I also want to offer a big thank you to this board, to Dr. Valoria, to Dr. Keller, Ryan Zaheda, and the many others for also bringing the wellness space to life here on our campus. And then I'll also be highlighting a little bit about our tiered counseling support team, which is undergoing a multi-year process to be recognized as an AXA model program. A big area of focus for us is on, this year, is on teaching students about the importance of digital citizenship and warn them about the potential dangers and effects of technology. Not only have we had layered communication about the various impacts of technology, we've also layered in a lot of education this year. For example, lessons at the beginning of the year, behavior talks that speak to the dangers of cyberbullying, and digital citizenship lessons that we've had for all of our students, which has resulted in 90% of all of our students demonstrating mastery of understanding around those topics. These lessons focused on building a positive online identity, healthy screen time habits, the role of an upstander in reporting incidents, and also the potential legal implications of inappropriate behavior online. We are also in the process of investigating the high percentage of students who say they have a trusted adult on campus, which is amazing, yet feel they do not have the time to discuss concerns with those trusted adults per our LCAP survey data, which is definitely concerning to us. Our counselors have made a concentrated effort at the beginning of this year to host a slew of school-wide lessons about connecting with those trusted adults on campus and the many reasons why you would want to do so. And as you heard from our student report, we are also continuing our partnership with the International Institute of Restorative Practices, who recently trained 30 student leaders on our campus to facilitate, along with counselors, some of these topics of discussion throughout the year. And now on to our wellness space. This is a very exciting slide, as I'm happy to announce that after some summer remodeling, we now have some great momentum to our newly established space with furniture and some finishing design touches which are going to come here on November 1st. Currently, our students are battling over what to actually name the space with the Riders Cove, the Cove and the Barrel being the top runners, which is not surprising considering the number of surfers that we have here on our campus. The space has great potential, and I know it'll provide another supportive lift to the social-emotional work that we are doing as a school and as a district. And then finally, our counselors in the midst of a multi-year data process review that focuses on increasing direct services to kids while also reducing the indirect services, which I know Dr. Keller will talk a bit more about this evening. This work has clear goals around supporting all students with a supplementary closing the achievement gap goal, where our counselors will be focusing on students new to Laguna Beach Community, something that we've noticed our students struggling with in the past. Shifting gears and with a focus on creating safe and equitable schools, we will continue our work around improving school-wide disciplinary practices, continue our momentum in reducing chronic absenteeism, and also look for ways, as I mentioned, about increasing parent engagement. Last year, we had a strong focus on improving Tier One behavioral practices, and those efforts helped us to reduce behavior referrals by a whopping 63%, which was very impressive. That said, we have an immediate call to action to reduce our current suspension rates, which currently sit at a 7.5% rate. We plan to address this in multiple ways, including the creation of educational behavioral academies, where students will learn the cause and effect of their behavior and the ways in which they can remediate their situation by providing some level of restitution that supports the rest of our campus community. In addition, we're looking to develop stronger partnerships with our counselors around student discipline, where students can get counseling support to help in peer conflicts, managing their emotions, or develop strategies to help reduce some of those impulsive decisions that they're making. In switching over to chronic absenteeism, we will continue to partner with our counselors and attendance team and our families that are out there to help reduce chronic absenteeism below the pre-pandemic mark as we left last year. And we'll continue to put practices in place that emphasize on ongoing outreach and solution-oriented meetings to help students prepare to be there and ready and be here each and every day to ensure that they have the success that's on our campus. And this has been a proven support model that ensures that students have the seat time they deserve, as well as instill success along the way. And one of the more challenging aspects here is this work that we have around parent engagement. I know last year, we were looking at our LCAP results, and it was nice to see positive trends in school-to-parent communication. And now we want to look for ways to increase classroom-to-parent engagement by rolling out more standardized quarterly messaging from our core subject areas, which will provide brief updates of work that's currently being done and also provide families a bit of a roadmap about some of that work that's ahead. We also see a lot of value in having more community get-togethers with our parents. For example, the Lunch with a Wave Rider tends to be a pretty big hit, so we're going to be adding some more of those on the calendar. And then also partnering with our PTA to have more community get-togethers and sociales here on our campus too as well, and off. And with that said, I just want to thank you for your time tonight and appreciate your ongoing support.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members or any comments?
Thanks, President Vickers. Thanks, Principal Vidal. On the chronic absenteeism, do you have a goal for this year?
Under five percent.
You've gone from 11% to 7% on your absenteeism.
We're aiming for under 5%.
You are looking for under 5%.
Yes, that's our goal.
Okay, great. And board members, any other questions before I ask my second?
You can go ahead.
Kelly, no, go ahead.
7.5%. Any comparisons of how other middle schools do on suspension rates?
I don't now have any comparisons to other middle schools. I know that is much higher than the norm. And in my personal experience being across different districts, typically you like to see suspension rates around 3%. So our goal is to make that shift. It's a lofty goal, but I think that we have the power to do so. And I think we have some great things that are in place. I know that the district office is also providing some support and some consultation with Solution Tree, so we're good planning to brainstorm some of these ideas, these educational academies that we have at hand, in hopes of getting some ongoing coaching as we develop these new platforms for alternatives. Because, you know, exclusionary discipline, although some feel that there is like this zero-tolerance expectation when certain students do certain deeds on campus, I think it's important for everybody to remember that we're dealing with 11-14-year-old students, and especially as they're navigating these changes of who they are, impulse management. And so I think we can do a better job as a school in educating our students about the impact that they have and providing more restitution opportunities for them as an alternative to what would be exclusionary discipline.
Do you have any idea why we're so high compared to?
Well, I think it's, in full transparency, you know, ed code offers administration the discretion to make a determination on whether we want to have a suspendable offense or not. In some cases, depending on the egregious action of the child, it kind of mandated a certain way. And I think up until now, our discretion has been more along the lines of providing some level of education, but also with a natural consequence of a suspension. And I think that we can do a better job having more educational opportunities, as well as providing communication like this for our community, for them to have a good understanding of why we have to do our due diligence in educating our kids and not having exclusionary practices like that.
I was impressed with the new chart on the walls that tells if it's a minor or major offense. I thought that was just really interesting. It was so large, I was real scared.
Do you break that?
Well, that kind of messaging definitely helped with our Tier One referral reductions, but it wasn't about the fear aspects of it. It was just making sure that everybody was really clear that what we're hoping, or what our expectations were as we positively reinforce behavior on campus.
Do you break it down by grade?
What's that?
Did you break it down by grade level?
The suspension rates?
Uh huh.
I can't, I don't have that information with you, but I can tell you the types of infractions were really around microaggressions with things that people were saying to one another, as well as digital citizenship and cyberbullying.
Thank you.
So thanks for the report. It's been a great year already, so I appreciate that. I have a comment on the same thing, which I'm not entirely sure what to do with, but I wonder if there isn't more that we can do around parent engagement with some of these issues? I mean, I think for parents who have middle school students, it's just like this deep disciplinary void, right? Like occasionally, you get a letter, I never have, but about a minor referral or a major referral. I wouldn't want to out my kid here, but you know, there is a sort of lack of real understanding about what precisely is going on in the school. And we also have a district that doesn't provide parent feedback about either behavior or performance once you get past elementary school. So I wonder if there's a way of getting parents more engaged in that. Like some schools actually, after a second, like bullying referral, for example, require the parents to come in to have a conversation about a sort of restorative justice sort of thing. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out there to ask whether or not you think maybe more parent engagement would be helpful around these issues.
Yeah, I will say that we currently have a similar process where it's almost treated like a student-study team where we bring, but it's really behaviorally focused. And so when we're monitoring sort of like minor and major behavior referrals, there is this certain threshold that, you know, based on what Jim was talking about, the number of referrals and what it might equate to, one of those pieces in that continuum is having a meeting to discuss strategies about how we can best support him and how we can partner with families to ensure that they don't continue down the same path. But maybe there's other layers that are in there, and I think I was talking with Dr. Canenberg, and she was sharing a little bit about some of the counselor-level involvement that's happening at the high school to help partner in that, so that it's not just so much left up to the child to manage these strategies, but also to have ongoing touchpoints with another counseling support to help them along the way. And so we're hoping to fold that into that platform to make it more meaningful.
Terrific report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm really pleased with the college and career readiness part that you're doing. And I just had a couple of questions. One, are you doing that middle school roadshow?
Middle school roadshow? What is that? I'm not familiar with that.
That's something that the rest of CCA is doing, where your counselors would go, your Thurston counselors would go to the high school and view all of the CCA classes that are there?
I know there's a lot of collaboration around that. I just didn't know it to be as the roadshow.
They have one, yeah, they have one day where they do that and expose them to all of it, and I guess it's pretty successful. And then the other question, do you have some CCA ambassadors that work at your school with your students?
Can you be more descriptive about that?
There are high school students that have taken CCA classes, and then they come to the middle school and they talk to kids about some of the opportunities in CCA.
I'm aware of them when they come out during our college and career weeks to help support those initiatives and other clubs, but I don't have the bird's-eye view of those students coming to the middle school on a consistent basis.
Okay. I think in some places, they actually kind of help run one of the clubs.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we have them come down, but I don't know if it would be, that would fit under the umbrella of like Model UN and things like that, they do that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, perfect. And then, like, I was just a little bit puzzled about, you had so many reduced discipline referrals.
Right.
I mean, 63% reduction, that's fabulous, but yet, yet the suspension rate was high, so that just kind of didn't jive.
100%, yeah. We definitely were taking a tiered approach, and we wanted to make sure that we felt like we had a sound, universal system of practices. We're really emphasizing on reteaching for kids, positive reinforcement, but I agree with you. If I had to choose, I would have loved to have tackled both of those tiers as of last year, but we were highly focused and invested on getting those universal practices solidified. And now that we have a good foundation there, we're now moving up to the next tier to ensure that those types of results don't continue to happen for our kids. Thank you.
Dee, I just wanted to respond to the CCA and CTE part. We also do two field trips where the multimedia and the arts program come down and meet with ours, with our kids, and we walk them through all three of our programs down by the football field, and that happens twice a year. And we will be opening up our Makers Lab to the junior high students soon.
Thank you, Scott.
Now, Principal Vidal, back to the wellness space. I know that that's been an initiative for a couple of years, so it's so exciting to see it lift off. Can you tell us a little bit about like where it is on campus and how you foresee students using it over the year to come, kind of in your words?
Well, it's located centrally, so it's right in the next building over, and one of the classrooms has been remodeled to actually welcome students as the wellness space. We've hired a student support specialist who has a lot of experience. They used to have a wellness space in her previous district, and she will be working very closely with the similar practices that they have at the high school. Essentially, creating a student referral system that allows students to kind of come and go as need be, based on the different needs that they might have throughout the day, and providing that space for kids to get grounded, feel better about themselves or the issues that they're working through, and then kind of transitioning in back to class.
So it's a staffed space or staffed?
It is, yes. Our student support specialist has an office within that room, very similar to the way in which the high school has it, and then students are free to come and go as they need.
Wonderful. Thanks.
So if it was during class time, they could get a permission to go there if they needed like a timeout, a break?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Thank you. Is it also open during lunch?
What's that?
Is it also available during lunch?
Yes, that's a key time.
I know our students here have less time, you know, that they might have a period or whatever than the high school students, so it needs to be a little more programmed.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Thank you for a very thorough report and informative report.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Do we have public? Do we have public comment on our public hearing or just during the public hearing? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. Ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for twenty twenty four, twenty five per ed code section six, zero, one, one, nine, B, and certification of provision of standards aligned instructional materials. Public hearing is open at six forty-five. Any comment? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing. And we move to our next item, information item, human resources. Do we have public comment on this?
I received no public comments on item eight A.
So this is first quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. Mr. Conlon.
Yeah, there are no complaints received for the first quarter.
Thank you. This is information only, so we'll move to our next information item. Instructional services, student wellness program services and supports update. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Comprehensive support system for students is a essential condition to learn and thrive in school. This has been a longstanding priority for the board and Dr. Valoria. So I want to invite Dr. Keller up, our Director of Social Emotional Wellness Support, to provide an update to the board tonight on the district's student wellness program services and supports.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mayberry, and good evening, board, President Vickers, Dr. Valoria, staff and community members. As I begin my eighth year in Laguna Beach Unified, I am absolutely great. Want to communicate my gratefulness and and humbleness for your enduring support for these incredible social emotional support programs that we've been able to develop in our school district. It really does make an important difference in the lives of our students. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing the student wellness program services and supports which are critical to fostering a thriving school community. The collective commitment that we all share around every student every day and investments in qualified personnel and wellness programs empower students to flourish in school and in life. Your dedicated, your your dedicated Laguna Beach, it sets Laguna Beach Unified apart, not only from other districts in Orange County, but really across California and in and makes us competitive nationally. I want to take us back to prior to my start in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and actually this is some information from the California Healthy Kids Survey from the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, so nine years ago, nine plus years ago. At that time, we had seven school counselors serving all four of our school sites. We had one school nurse, four health clerks. We had four school psychologists, and that really was the 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 workforce behind supporting students' social emotional health. At that time, there was a very reactive model in place. It was really a crisis first crisis model and to address any needs that would come up around social emotional support. And we administer every two years the California Healthy Kids Survey. And in that anonymous survey, we get a lot of broad-based health information from students. We we survey students this year, most recently in sixth, seventh, ninth and eleventh grades. But back then, we were surveying students in seventh, ninth and eleventh grades. And I'm going to share some important information from our eleventh grade responders. So at that time, thirty-eight percent of our eleventh graders reported chronic sadness. That means that that at some point in the last year that they stopped doing something that they they usually enjoyed for two weeks or more for the during that year. Additionally, and very concerningly, sixteen percent of those students endorsed suicidal ideation, meaning that they students reported that they seriously considered attempting suicide within that last year. Those rates in the state or even across Orange County have always been about fourteen, fifteen, sixteen percent, but sometimes they're as high as twenty percent. In two thousand twenty-one, the Surgeon General of the United States basically called out that there's a youth mental health crisis and really put that label on it. And it was a it was a really strong call to action as as an outcome of after the pandemic. But really, we've been seeing this for a long time. Various factors like adverse childhood experiences, smartphone and social media use, sleep deprivation, addiction issues, and the pressure to be perfect highlighted the need to improve our systems of care. LBUSD leadership and the board with initial funding from School Power committed to enhancing systems that support improving youth strength and resilience. And I think that's really at the heart of our program. We're trying to cultivate student strengths. The aim was to shift from that that crisis response model to that that to a model that emphasized early intervention and prevention, and you'll hear a lot about that tonight. When I meet with parents in family education events or in small groups or one-on-one, I often ask, what do you want for your child? And what might an answer be? The most common answer that I hear is I want my child to be happy. Does that resonate? Yeah, that's what I want for my kids. I have a seventeen and a fourteen year old, two high schoolers. But when we explore that that loving response and hope for happiness, which is which is really a variable emotion, our families really aspire for their children to know themselves, to know their own strengths, to know what opportunities that that lie in front of them and to be able to navigate the social world with confidence and empathy as they cultivate their unique skills and talents. And in times of stress and hardship, we hope that our children have the resiliency skills to cope. And in times of need, be able to access qualified support to get to get support services. This embodies really the whole child education philosophy. And and that's really what this this board has has embraced. It's yes, it's about rigorous academic opportunities, of course. We want that for all students. It's also about cultivating lifelong assets, including self-management, social awareness, including maximizing personal strengths. We're replacing the old factory model of education with more personalized learning, explicitly supporting the development of social emotional skills and creating a TK through twelfth grade culture that prepares students for success now and throughout their lives. You've seen this in Mr. Vidal's presentation, but LBUSD has invested significantly in in high quality personnel, specialized personnel in a variety of different areas. And of course, leadership and my role in a variety of different roles. And we have a very strong evidence-based programs that we implement across the district. Our focus with social emotional learning is on really on, I think about it now, about career development and career readiness. These are the mindsets and skills that employers are hiring for as reflected in our learner profile. We're confident that when our students throughout their TK twelve experiences develop as empathetic citizens or as constructive collaborators, collaborators that they will develop and they'll develop all five of those that by the time that they walk across the stage as graduates, they're going to have a unique competitive advantage when compared to other other students that are focusing on academics alone. So over the course of the previous seven or eight years, we've added some additional staff that have really bolstered the social emotional support service that we provide to our students. Most notably, we've increased our school counseling staff from seven to nine now, serving our all four school sites. I've shared this before, but we have some of the lowest ratios of students to counselors in the state. The state average is one counselor to three hundred and eighty-five students, and we're right now at one counselor to two hundred and fifty-four students. At Thurston Middle School and at the high school, those ratios are even lower, as you can see on this chart. We've also at the Family Resource Center added a coordinator of family engagement, added a community liaison who provides family support services, counseling support. They help to develop family education programs and provide complex case management with with community, community agencies and supports. I do also want to note that we made one of the most one of the most brilliant hires ever when we hired an additional nursing staff member two weeks prior to going on distance education in March of two thousand twenty, which is very, very prescient. So thank you for that support. Yeah, Dr. Kelly wanted more nurses. So our nurses, Kelly Schultz and Pam Madge, are integral support providers, leading the site health clerk teams. They support complex student health needs and ensure emergency response programs such as our automated external defibrillators or our Narcan program and other emergency response programs are are always operationally ready. They train staff on CPR, stop the bleed, or other specialized healthcare procedures and assess students' health functioning for IEPs or injuries or accidents. Most importantly, the nurses and health clerk team offer students and sometimes staff caring and qualified emergency health support on site, on site and work tirelessly to creatively solve health education barriers that may impact students, working collaboratively with physicians, families and our staff. A day in the life of one of our school counselors, you've heard a little bit about it from from Mr. Vidal about the middle school counseling staff. But our elementary and middle school staff provide many aspects of tier one support from school-wide direct instruction services with social emotional learning programs, so second step program at the at the elementary school. They lead student success team meetings for those more involved problem-solving processes. They support college and career readiness, they support academic, academic needs in terms of providing support and assessing those needs and ensuring that there's interventions that can be put in place and helping lead those processes. A day in the life of a student support specialist, we have four student support specialists on on our team now. Two of those student support specialists are licensed clinical social workers. One is a pre-licensed clinical social worker, the other one is a credentialed school counselor. These individuals collaborate within those wellness teams and they provide specialized school-based mental health services and supports. They deliver case management services so students and families can successfully navigate intensive services with third-party providers in collaboration with the school, providing individual and sometimes group counseling services and delivering important crisis stabilization support. All of our school-based mental health providers, including the school counselors, student support specialists and school psychologists, lead our lead our teams in suicide risk screening, and we've had thirteen to date in this current school year. So that's an important process. That's that, to me, is good news that we're screening students and getting them connected to the appropriate services. They also, in the event of a crisis, will be providing not only crisis care in the moment, but they would be following up, providing crisis crisis intervention services after an event. Our student wellness programs support district, our district goals to develop college and career readiness, foster social emotional competence and self-identity and ensure safe and equitable and inclusive schools. On the safety initiatives, we have a variety of different practices that I want to highlight. Our See Something, Say Something, We Tip system is available twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to students and families and community members and staff. In the event of after-hours emergency or crisis, the Laguna Beach Police Department is notified, dispatched, and they'll be responding. We also monitor student device usage in our network or on on our devices. We have a system that monitors that twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days per year. And we would be, we have a response protocol and response process in the event that we get threats of harm to others or to self. And those systems are always in the background working and ensuring that students have rapid response support. And of course, our School Resource Officer Program is is a vital partnership with Laguna Beach Police Department. They provide services to all four school sites, helping mentor students and helping deliver impactful safety programming. I'd also like to highlight our partnership with Challenge Success, a program affiliated with Stanford, the Stanford Graduate School of Education. It was founded over twenty years ago in response to multiple youth suicides in the high-pressure culture in Palo Alto schools. Challenge Success partners with schools nationwide to elevate student voice and to help schools implement research-based strategies to improve wellness, engagement and belonging, and really to help young people to identify their personal definition of success. We know that success is measured in a lifetime and not necessarily in a moment. We began this partnership in two thousand eighteen. We use multiple data cycles of students surveying and sometimes staff surveying and parent surveying. We dug deeply into areas around how students get sleep, how they use their time, their perceptions of staff support, engagement with learning, school-related stress and so much more. And these datas really, these data have helped us to embark on several initiatives, including later secondary start times. We did that before the law changed around that to help promote sleep, the much-needed sleep that lots of secondary students were not getting. We also ended the semester break prior to winter break to to enhance playtime downtime and family time, which is so important to consolidate learning and to help young people to have much-needed breaks. We built in tutorial or advisement periods at the secondary level and then really focused on the the climate of care, which you're hearing a lot about tonight. Through the work with Challenge Success, we've also focused on project-based learning and authentic assessment. You hear that with Mr. Woodcott's class and a lot of the CTE work that's happening. Our unit design project that's happening, you've heard about previously, authentic exploratory research in our science classes. It's often project-based, hands-on, relevant learning. We're appreciative of those opportunities to partner with similar public and private schools experiencing common barriers to student wellness and success and the processing of making impactful school improvement. Now, I've invited two of my, well, really two of the most amazing people I've ever worked with in my career, my twenty-plus year career. And Alexis Mealy is one of our LBHS's, LBHS's school counselors, and she's going to share what the culminating experience is like for a student in the school counseling from the school counseling lens at Laguna Beach High School. And then Megan Humphries, our student support specialist at Laguna Beach High School, will share her work in that area.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alexis Mealy, and I am one of the four school counselors at Laguna Beach High School. I started in LBUSD in two thousand twenty-two, thanks to your support, the board's support. And I'm so excited to share with you the comprehensive work and impact our school counseling programs have across the district and specifically at LBHS. So our school counseling teams across the district follow the ASCA national model, and ASCA stands for the American School Counseling Association, which is a blueprint for school counseling programs focusing on four key areas, which you'll see on that black and white diamond right there. We define our programs, we manage data and student needs. We deliver services such as one-on-one counseling, small group support, classroom presentations, and we are regularly assessing our program's impact. With this, our school counseling teams work among three domains, which you've probably heard, the academic support and success, college and career readiness and social emotional support. In the academic domain, that that support at the high school typically looks like course registration. We are providing academic interventions and partnering with our teachers and our interventionists. We're ensuring our students are always on track to meet their academic goals and, of course, graduation requirements. In the college and career domain, we start early in helping students find their passions, their strengths and their interests. And then we move into career exploration and then, of course, college planning and post-secondary goals. Social emotional support typically looks like individual brief counseling as needed. We support with crisis and we also refer to resources as needed. With the multiple check-ins that we have every year with every student on our caseload, we're able to build those strong relationships to ensure that students know that we're a person that they can go to for support. Our counseling services are vertically aligned. We across the district and they are data-driven. We focus on proactive and preventative measures to address student needs. And our program goals look different every single year because we focus on that need and data year by year. An example of this at the high school is we have newly introduced freshman conferences where counselors are meeting with every freshman and their parents to strengthen that partnership with families and to make sure that our students start their high school journey off on the right foot. And we're really focusing on their strengths and their interests to make sure we can create that four-year plan that fits for them. Our low caseloads allow for that personalized attention and time to build strong relationships. I think about looking at my student list, and I truly feel like I can look at that list and know something about each and every one of those kids. And I was never able to do that in my old school district with a caseload of over five hundred. Our partnerships include teachers, special education teams, obviously the College and Career Center, and then our student support specialist. Speaking of partnerships, at LBHS, myself and the student support specialist, Megan Humphries, who you'll hear from next. Sorry if that's a little blinding, that gif. We co-advised an amazing program called the Student Support Collective. It was previously known as the Peer Mentor Program. We rebranded it this year to really accumulate what we are doing on our campus. The Student Support Collective is a group of thirty-plus students. They're absolutely incredible and passionate about helping their peers, grades nine through twelve, and they have a passion for mental health awareness. These students went through an interview process in the spring and then a summer training with Megan and I on Mental Health One-O-One, Suicide Prevention and Leadership. These students are our eyes and ears on our campus. They are the ones that are in the classrooms, on social media, so they see things that we may not. And they can bring those things to our attention to make sure that we're supporting all students. They play a large role in de-stigmatizing mental health on our campus. They build connections and they create a welcoming and thriving school community. It's been such a joy working with these students and we absolutely love this group. I'm going to pass it along to Megan to share just a few things that our Student Support Collective is doing this year.
The Student Support Collective is currently involved in connection groups for our students to meet in a structured yet fun environment with students who feel disconnected on campus to increase positive relationships and a sense of belonging. Our Student Support Collective creates wellness initiatives schoolwide through focusing on topics such as the impact of kindness, bullying prevention, substance use prevention, our No Place For Hate initiatives, and how to identify and help a friend in need. And this upcoming week, they're all going into our IS One science classes to deliver bullying prevention lessons focused on how to prevention lessons focused on how to stand up if you see something that isn't right and how to leave a positive legacy on campus and just feel like it's so much more personalized coming from their fellow students. I'm Megan Humphries. I'm the student support specialist at Laguna Beach High School, and today I'm here to discuss my role on campus and the positive impact that we're making in emotional well-being for all of our students across the district. To foster a culture on campus of emotional wellness, I work with teachers to provide classroom lessons, including mental health warning signs and suicide prevention, healthy communication, test anxiety, mental health and nutrition, stress management, and more. There are so many connections to the learner profile through the student support specialist role, and specifically through these presentations, the goal is for students to be able to effectively communicate their needs, to be able to creatively problem-solve situations regarding either their own emotional well-being or to support a peer or friend, to empower them with education to make healthy decisions, and to be an empathetic citizen not only on campus but in the world. The connection to the learner profile continues in our group and individual work with students. I meet individually and in groups with students for ongoing emotional support. Currently at the high school, I have 23 students that I meet with either weekly or biweekly. This support includes complex case management, including consultation with outside providers to support school success or referring students to additional resources, including Caretholus and Hazle Health. I've also seen a positive impact through the LBHS Well Space. Students will often come to the Well Space to recharge before their next class, and some students with more intensive emotional struggles use the space for a break during class time in coordination with myself and their teacher in order to improve concentration and focus to then return to class. Our Student Support Specialist Team provides emotional support and promotes social, emotional learning, knowing that the investment in our students' mental health not only improves their overall well-being but also enhances their feelings of safety, willingness to take risks on campus, motivation, and resilience. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I want to take us back to the California Healthy Kids Survey, and obviously, there's so much intentional effort here and a lot of data that is not being shared too in terms of just like, there's other grade levels assessed, and it's really important to really unpack that, and we do that work as school teams and goal-setting and our intervention planning. But on the most recent 11th grade, the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey from the 23, 24 school year, so this was administered last spring, chronic sadness decreased by 39% from that 15, 16 level. That's 38% down to that 23% that you're seeing. Obviously, we'd like that to be zero. There are some gender differences too in this, so that's really important to also look at, and I think that we're addressing those through our systems of care that we're putting in place at various, in various touchpoints. Even more encouraging, we've seen a 62% reduction in that suicidal ideation. Of course, we want that to be zero. Like, I wouldn't be satisfied until that's zero, but that's a significant reduction compared to that 14% prevalence in 2015, 16, and it's significantly lower than the countywide average with 22,000 other students taking the same survey at 14% rate. Additionally, another area that we looked at, we had that 45% of students, 45% 11th grade students endorsed recent use of alcohol or drugs in that 2015, 16 survey, and the most recent survey, it was down to 22% of students, although, again, we'd like that to be zero, but that's a reduction of 51%. We continue to make concerted efforts with the board's support. Perceptions of safety is another indicator that's not reflected up here, but those are very high relative to other districts in Orange County, other students taking the same survey. 94% of our 11th graders in the most recent survey endorse feeling safe or very safe on campus. Again, we want that to be 100%, but we're continuing to work on that goal. So these statistics underscore the profound impact of our collective investments in the health and well-being of our students. While we cannot eliminate every risk that might face our students, we certainly want to continue to, with our robust system of care within the LBUSD that emphasizes prevention and early intervention. We continue to target specific gaps that we analyze on a continuous basis, and we'll work to improve the learning experiences for all students at every grade level. Together, we're making a tangible difference in the lives of our students. And again, I just want to express my, our collective appreciation for the vision and support to implement the essential conditions for learning. We're excited to continue to strengthen our system and further close those support gaps and engage families and communities to support students to flourish in school and in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keller. Board members, you have questions or comments? Go ahead.
Dr. Keller, thank you very much for this very comprehensive report, and thank you for that long runway of data that you gave going back to 2017. So we've got like between six and seven years of data. Fellow board members, I've only been here for four years, but the investments that you've made and supported, whether it's Stanford's Challenge Success, that contract comes before us, it seems like before we know it, we're looking at it again on, you know, research-backed strategies on how to deal with high-achieving cultures, which we're in, and what we need to do. Those are not small changes that we've made over the years to the schedule, to the homework policies, to the quality of the, you know, assignments that teachers are assigning, and you're starting to see the impacts of that, right? You're starting to see kids sleeping more, thinking about suicide less, feeling safer at school, and that's, that's very moving to me because all the other things that we're doing can't happen unless that's right. So I just want to express my gratitude. Thank you for even sharing the alcohol and drug use numbers. You know, we hear about that a lot as board members, especially if you're a parent of a high schooler. So all of it, I think, is going in the right direction, and I hope that we continue to support, you know, staff and outside experts that help us in this journey. So thank you. No questions.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you. Member Perry, you have a question?
Thank you. I, I love that the suicide ideation went down, and I think that's due to all of the skills for mental health that your support specialists and your counselors are helping the students with. So like Kelly, I really see how it's very valuable. I had a couple of questions. One, I thought before when I was looking at some of the data that 7th grade had more of an issue than other grades. Was that true?
Yeah, so we have, so the numbers that you reflected were 11th grade that I share with you tonight, yes. Some of the middle school numbers, and I think that Mr. Vidal and his team are definitely looking at those, we have, we have some additional issues around, not necessarily substance use at that level, but there are issues around relational aggression, relational bullying that we certainly want to address going forward. So perceptions of safety are lower at the middle school level, and historically, those have been higher, and so that's something that we definitely want to continue to focus on. And I'm confident that with a concerted effort from our team with the systems that are being put in place, that those numbers will improve in the future.
Right. And a question was, do you have any after-school hours with any of your people?
We have made that available to families and students, so we do make that available, but we don't necessarily, students access Hazel Health Services are, and those services are available up to 7:00 PM for students, and those are, that's a licensed mental health practitioner working with a student if they've been referred through our student support specialist. We also offer, at the Family Resource Center, we will be offering after-hours services for students and parents in that setting. Right now, we haven't had any scheduled appointments at that range of time. Most families, actually, most students are busy with, well, at the secondary level, they're busy with athletics or other activities, but we definitely make that available and schedule it at the readiness time that's mutually agreeable with the family and the staff member.
I really appreciate that option, being open to students and parents.
And the Family Resource Center, that location has helped us make, have a geographic spot where people can come meet at those later hours.
I just want to add my own thanks. I mean, I've been listening to these reports and the comprehension, you know, the comprehensiveness, I meant to say, of all of these services we have, which now include the Family Resource Center. It's fantastic. I really liked hearing from the two counselors tonight. It's nice to hear where the rubber hits the road, what's going on in the schools, so I appreciated that, and thank you both.
So great work. Have an amazing team.
I just.
Thank you, Dr. Keller.
I'm appreciative of Member Osborne's comment because it was, I think, a big step for the board at that time to get into social, emotional learning, and not that many districts were putting an emphasis in that area, and I think this report really shows how it's paid off here, but the comprehensiveness of the report shows that we're providing a lot of services in what is becoming more and more an apparent need for students and at younger and younger ages. And I think we can't expect them to be successful academically if they're not comfortable with themselves and the issues and the problems that they're facing. So I know we had real leadership, I'm sure Member Perry will remember, when we started this, and it was, I mean, I remember getting questions myself, like, what are you guys doing? I mean, does that belong in the schools? And it most certainly does because it's, as I said, more and more apparent. So thank you for giving us all the details. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And now we move to our first action item of the evening, which is under business services. Do we have public comment on approval of Laguna Beach High School pool modernization conceptual plan?
President Bickers, yes. I have three comment cards and.
More, there's more down here.
Some more coming down, and then for members of the audience, if you haven't yet turned in a card, you can turn in a card, and if you haven't turned in a card and you want to speak when we're done with the cards, we'll have a time for that as well, assuming that there's time remaining in the public comment session. So the first speaker I'd like to call forward, is it okay to call them now, President Bickers?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, if you could come up, you'll have three minutes to speak on 10A, and then after Mr. Harvey, we'll kind of give you a heads-up who's on deck. We'll have Mrs. Kelly Zinsor coming up after. And once the timer's up, Mr. Harvey, feel free to begin your public comment.
Good evening, members of the board. I'll be brief because I, it is apparent there'll be other speakers on this, on this topic. I want to applaud your commitment to this, this long road that you've been on. This is ultimately going to be a compromise as most big infrastructure projects in the city of Laguna Beach, because of the limited space, it demands a reasonable approach to infrastructure projects. This design by the Runow Clark Architect Firm precisely reaches that balance. And you've heard me tell this story before, so I'll be brief, but I advocated for a 50-meter pool 35 years ago as a full-time lifeguard lieutenant here in the city and as a member of the United States Water Polo Team. I advocated strongly against the waiting pool as it was not conducive, it's not deep enough to teach swimming lessons, it's unsafe. We got what we got, but that's the history I bring to this, when we were moving the pool from the quad at the high school across the street, some of you may remember that. This design's most impactful eventual result is concurrent usage. It allows for concurrent usage by the district as well as by the community. It reduces the number of hours the pool is operational, thereby limiting the impacts to the neighboring residents. The lights, the whistles will be reduced by hours. I encourage you to remain consistent and make the prudent decision to deliver the facilities our student athletes desperately need. This pool and its thoughtful design will meet and exceed those needs now and for decades to come. As a parent of three kids in this district, I am confident you will see the city council's recent decision to build a separate city pool for what it was, a misguided notional odyssey. It will never happen. It is neither sensible nor realistic. The public comment that was critical of the pool here on district property tells you everything you need to know. The residents didn't want the pool that's on district property that's already a pool. In closing, a prudent, well-thought compromise, while not 50 meters, meets the needs of our student athletes, the community members, and will finally allow for a competitive swim team in this city, which has seven miles of coastline. Despite the inadequate facilities, the Laguna Beach Water Polo Program, as you'll see by the people in attendance tonight, is exceptionally competitive. It's a testament, it's a testament to the commitment of the athletes, the coaches, the parents, and I ask you to join that group and approve this very well-thought design. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. President Bickers and members of the audience, if you need to hold the applause, you can give us jazz plans. If we allow clapping, we have to allow booing, and it just takes longer, so feel free to do some non-verbal or non-audible things. Kelly will be followed by Jenny Sebold. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good evening. I just wanted to say how grateful I am that you guys are looking at the 45-meter pool, having had a son in the program, and I now have a daughter in the program, so I've had both sexes in the program. They will now be, the girls will now be able to start practicing and getting ready for season at the same time as the boys as they go through CIF, so it's a big deal. Also, at the study session, there was talk about the showers, and I just have to say, these kids use the pool in the winter, both boys and girls, and there are also kids who live in South Laguna and there are kids who live in Eliso, and having indoor showers, I think, would be nice for the kids, so I know that was a discussion. And then I don't think everyone's going to speak, so I just wanted everyone who's here in support of the pool to stand up just briefly so we can see, have a visual. All right. I think that says a lot. So anyway, thank you for doing this. I think it's good long-term thinking. These kids need to have home games, they're student athletes. My kids and a lot of these kids take AP classes, and having every game and away game is really rough, so really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Jenny Sebold, come on up, and yeah, there you go. Good, you guys are quick learners. Jenny Sebold, you'll be followed by Carter McKenzie. Go ahead, Mrs. Sebold.
I don't, I just want to reiterate the first two speakers. I was going to say a lot of what they said. I don't need to now, but thank you for the whole entire process. I thought it's been very transparent, even though there have been comments to the contrary. I thought that the district's done a really good job of bringing every group and constituent and making them involved in the process. I'm a booster rep, and no one really cares what I think, but I'm just a support role, but they've brought me in and asked my opinion, and I think you probably heard them sneak in the back. They might have been here earlier, they got here at 6:45 tonight because they played their home game, home water polo game today at University High School, because they don't play their home games here, so just as a reminder, these are the faces to what the decision that you're making today. They're here with their glowing hair to reiterate that they would really like to be able to train more effectively here in Laguna. Thank you.
Thank you. We do care what you think.
Sebold and Carter McKenzie, you can come to the podium. Carter will be followed by Howard Hills.
Good evening, board. I did not think I was going to use my time here on a Thursday night again, but yet here I am. Yeah, I just want to underscore my commitment to this project and, you know, the water polo's team support, the community's support, our, you know, our student population at the high school support. I'm sure Kate will speak to it a little bit tonight as well. And one thing I really want to highlight is that, you know, we talk, you, board members talk about, you know, the education of the whole child, and I think athletics is a crucial part of that. I think, you know, without, you know, a lot of these students, a lot of these players, you know, athletics is a really big deal for them, and it motivates them to, you know, work in class, to be respectful of their teachers, and, you know, it kind of holds them accountable. This program really does, and I think, you know, building this new pool would really, you know, increase that accountability for our students, as well as you heard other members of the audience said tonight, you know, the current pool as it is right now doesn't, doesn't fit the needs of our students. I mean, we're not able to, I mean, I know Chase Benson last year was talking a little bit about it as well, but, you know, we can't have home games since that, that community is just lax sometimes, you know, the students integrating, coming to the games, cheering, you know, cheering us on, watching us, that lacks sometimes when we have to play our home games in Irvine. You know, students don't want to go through the canyon traffic after school to support us, although Mr. Carlson did this afternoon. And so I just really want to underscore the importance of, you know, the student support, our support of this new program. When I was here last year, you know, I talked to so many students, and I really, I did not encounter students that, you know, we don't want a new pool, but I think the majority of our student population really supports this, and there's a lot of controversy around the issue, but I think ultimately, our goal is for the, you know, the goal, the goal of the district is to help, you know, support our students, support the stakeholders in the community, and I really think that building this pool and, you know, taking the time, making investment in the future for our program would be really important. The, you know, the water polo program produces so many high-level athletes every year, more than any other sport at our high school. You go to the Division One schools competing at the highest level in the Olympics, and, you know, our pool is not, is not meeting those needs for those students as well as the general population too. I know, I remember talking to Member Perry last year about it, our PE kids don't have the opportunity to swim because we don't have a pool for them to, you know, swim in during the day. And, you know, Elisa and Agal High School, I know they offer that as well, so I think it really expand the offerings, not only for the water polo and swim athletes, but for our general student population, to really give them the opportunity. So again, I really want to underscore the importance of building this new pool and my support for it. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, Carter. Howard Hills, Dr. Gloria, or President Bickers, do we have any other cards that need to come down my way? No, if there's. Now, if there's anybody that wishes to speak after Mr. Hills, you're welcome to line up behind him. Go ahead, Mr. Hills.
Who wants to follow Carter, you know, jeez.
Yeah, we know.
I think that what he said about sports being good for the well-being, physical activities and exercise and, and competition being good for the well-being of students and the whole child, and, and the previous presentation on well-being and the space program framework that they talked about includes both physical activities and academic activities, that's why we're so happy to hear about the improved cast scores, because that means that instead of a one in every child in the campus maybe not being up to speed academically, you know, when you're, now we have it, so that two out of three kids are now up to speed academically, that's good news, and with that, that last one-third, we still got to work on, but, you know, you think about when you're an adolescent, two of the things that really make you feel good about yourself, if you're doing well academically and if you're participating in sports, so it's all very important. And I just want to say that, what I came here to say tonight is, I just wanted to speak to the water polo players and let them know that, yes, the process is difficult, as the Board President has pointed out, it's a long 10-year term process, and it's going to go up and down, and it's going to change, and the city's going to be involved or the city's not going to be involved, and, you know, all those issues are out there. But I think it's important to convey to the water polo players that the community supports the water polo team and supports the players, and that what goes on in the governing process isn't, as Carter said, it's difficult and complicated. But, you know, I, when I was in high school, I thought I was a waterman, I could swim from Bird Rock to Brook Street, and I thought I was really a good waterman. And then Coach Carey, in 1970, they had a team that went all the way to the finals in CIF, and they lost in the finals. We had a great water polo team that year, but Coach Carey invited me to go out for this, the water polo team, and I thought, well, I, I can swim from Bird Rock to Brook Street, I'd be a natural swimmer. And I, I played water polo with the team, I tried out for it, I didn't make it, but I learned one thing, and that water polo is the toughest sport there is in the world. And so I just wanted to come up tonight and express to the water polo players, the whole community knows that their sport is one of the most wonderful sports there is, and the whole community supports the, supports their sport, and I just wanted to say that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hills. We have a, thank you for those. We have another speaker, if you could just, if you're welcome to share your name for the record?
Yes, and I'm going to take you up on your offer. My name's John Schneider, I've spoken about this before, I couldn't help it tonight, just listening to all the speakers and, and seeing the young players. One other element that wasn't covered is that, you know, like, as an example tonight, you know, I've had three daughters play, two are playing D1 right now, and the third one is in El Toro, because after you hit the age of 15, your club practice is in Irvine. So she'll get home around 9:45, that's two to three days per week, and I don't know if anybody really wants their, you know, their young children driving in Irvine at 10 o'clock at night consistently, then having to come home and do homework, whereas if we have with the 45-meter pool, I believe that we have extra capacity where we can eventually grow our club up to 18, like most high schools, and we won't have to farm them out to the other high schools or locations around Orange County. I think it'll be much safer for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Are there any other speakers on item 10A?
Hi, I'm Tara, one of the parents of a kid maybe here right now. I have four children in our school district, and piggybacking on that timeliness, my 10-year-old right now is at practice as part of a club team here, because the hours are available now and will get home at 9:30, and, you know, we love our family, we love sitting around the table for dinner, we love supporting the one who's an artist, the ones who are athletes, and it's increasingly difficult to the comment of kids driving inland and these various times to accommodate our students of the school to both enjoy what they love, which makes them feel good and have all the attributes we want in kids, and happiness, and to also sustain a family, and this pool will really increase familyhood for all of us and siblings spending time together and role modeling, these are great role models, and all the young kids don't get to see that, they don't get to have as many opportunities to be poolside, see composure that these kids demonstrate every day, so they're great kids and it'd be great for younger kids to see it.
Hello there, Mike Pelzner, I just wanted to also put my support behind this pool. Our family came to Laguna Beach because you guys have built such a great water polo program here, and I just think it's time for the infrastructure to catch up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm George Lefebvre, I want to, you know, add a little bit more towards some of that, because I know you're right now just focused on water polo, because there are water polo players here, but it actually extends over to all the swimmers too. And what you have to realize is how much money this district has put into other programs, specifically like the football field that just got redone, and over decades, the pool has not been done. And what has come about on the outcome over the time, we've been struggling just to try to make it work, and we have gone to other outside pools. And it, like you said, we're coming home at 9:30, 9:45, and it's, makes it really difficult for the family. What Carter mentioned, what I talked about is the fact that all the football program and versus all the other programs academically, who is the one who has really come out to really shine is really swimming and water polo for scholarships and for other types of areas, so I really think you guys really need to focus on supporting the pool.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item 10A? No?
Thank you. Okay, we need to have any questions from board members on the report that we have in the agenda? No? Then we need a motion on the floor? Second, I'll second it. And now we have discussion.
President Vickers, I wanted to update the Board and the community on the work of the Subcommittee to work with the City Council to determine the city's direction on whether they're going to participate in the project or not. I know we have a lot of people that are interested in that information. In August, the city asked us to reopen negotiations on partnering on the pool. As many people are aware, as the Boards are aware, on March 14th of 2024, they decided to go out on their own and build their own pool and not to participate. In August, we agreed that we would reopen those conversations with them, and I had multiple conversations, and we also corresponded with a letter asking for them to begin negotiations, and after multiple conversations, the city has decided they're not going to financially participate in the pool. They have their decision to, which stands for March 14th, to investigate locations for a second pool location at some other location, and will continue to rent space in the high school pool. So we do have direction, we affirm direction, their Subcommittee, their city manager, our superintendent, the Board's Aquatics Subcommittee, President Vickers and I have had those conversations on behalf of all of the people that have worked on the pool, and want to report that back to the Board that we have that clarified, and I think we can move forward. I'm in support of the 45-meter pool, especially knowing that, you know, they are going to continue their work to look for an alternate location for our community pool, and of course, we'll still invite the community into this pool. So, I wanted to see if there's any discussion or questions from fellow Board members on that update.
Just the city, the city representatives, we're Bob Whalen and Sue Kemp-
Yes.
-of that Subcommittee, and you and I were the Board representatives to that Subcommittee, along with Dr. Valoria and city manager, and some other people from the city and the Recreation Department to provide us with information along the way. I mean, this has been a long time since that we've been meeting.
Yes, yes, it's been a lot of meetings, yes, many meetings.
So, I think it's worth mentioning that, in spite of the fact that it's been presented that the city's not interested in making a financial commitment, I don't think that that means that the community won't be using the pool, and I think that's a really important point to make, that it will be many years before the city has a pool, and if it's a 25-meter pool with a waiting area and a lot of shallow space, which would be appropriate for the community, it seems likely that teams in the community and people who want to swim would continue to use the pool. And so, I, you know, know that there will be an arrangement, a fiscal arrangement with them to do that, but I'm proceeding with the understanding that you shared, which is that we are always open to the community using the pool, even though we are building it for our athletic teams, and I just think that's important for people to know, that this is not something that we're off doing on our own without community participation.
That's a correct point to emphasize, because we were approached right after the city made their decision by groups that knew that they needed to have water to have their programs in, and including lap swimmers, so we are very receptive to that and feel a, at least, in my opinion, we feel a responsibility to the greater community that they will have access to a pool that meets their needs.
I just wanted to clarify, there's been an awful lot of erroneous information out there about the cost of the pool, anywhere from $100 to $150 million. And you see it all over the place, I get stopped all the time and asked, why, why are we doing this? I wonder if Jeff could clarify what the estimate at this time is?
Thank you. Yeah, so we have not updated the estimate since we initially updated our master plan, so you're in the ballpark of about $19 million. And why I think that's important is if we go back and look at the 2024 adopted budget for this year, when you look in that budget, Fund 40, which supports our facilities improvements, our capital improvement program, by '26, '27 would have accumulated over $19.3 million, and by '27, '28 accumulated over $22.3 million. So in the current adopted budget, it supports the current estimate that's out there. Now, the one thing that we know about estimates, especially with construction, is they're hopefully close but absolutely wrong. So we have flexibility built into our budget, we continue to see gains in the one-time general fund dollars within the budget, and that's mostly due to carryover. As you know, when we close our books every year, there's a certain proportion of funds that's unrestricted, turns into carryover, and that gets identified in the components of the ending fund balance as potential one-time dollars that the Board uses. In the most recent example of that, it was the commitment of the $10 million in addition to the current transfers to Fund 40 to support the facility's master plan improvements.
So what you're saying is that because the Board so judiciously watched our budget and saved money, and of the leadership of our superintendent, that we have the money to pay for the $17, $19 million pool, 45 meters?
Correct, and your business office is very appreciative of the policies that allow for the conservative budgeting approach.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Kelly, that's an important point, because there keeps being this conversation about a bond or about dipping into general fund, and none of that seems to be true, because in the adopted budget, which we recently adopted, we've got the $19 million that we've set aside for this capital improvement project, which we've been planning now for two years. So, I think, thank you for that clarification, and, Dr. Kelly, thank you for asking about the funding stream.
I think there's credit for financial stewardship for many years.
Thank you.
We have a student, do you want to yield to our student first, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, I know Carter mentioned some of this previously, I myself am not a user of the pool, but I know that my friends and other students would be, love to be able to attend these home games to support the water polo team, and it's not very easy to do this when the home games can't be held at school and you have to leave campus to attend the games. And then I also think that this would be a great opportunity to foster more school spirit within our student body.
Thank you. Member Perry?
So, Mr. Dixon, we did transfer $10 million from our general fund to the facilities fund, correct, so that we would have all that money there?
The transfer hasn't taken place because we haven't needed it yet, so it's still in the components of ending fund balance, which is why you see the $14 million in the last budget, $10 million of that is committed to be transferred, but it's at a time that is needed. So whenever the construction of the pool begins, that's when we timed it, assuming in this budget, in the adopted budget, that transfer is assumed to happen next year.
Okay, and right now, how much do we have in the facilities?
In our current capital improvement program?
Mm-hmm.
A unrestricted balance, so this is in addition to about $1.8 million of encumbered funds to support the design work, we have about $1.2 million.
Okay, so we definitely need that. I think from the very beginning, we really wanted our water polo students to be able to have home games, that's so important, and we wanted also students not to be out, like the gentleman was saying, until 9:45 at night in Irvine. Those were two huge goals, and then we needed to look at the money part of it too. As, as we went on, I think the $100 and $150 million, it's part of a bigger general plan that I think is still coming, and I'm glad the pool is kind of separate for that, from that. Mr. Dixon kindly answered my questions, I, I wanted to know why the Mirth Pool wouldn't work, because that seemed like it would be much quicker and our kids wouldn't have to go out of town for so long, but he explained that they need to dig down four more feet, and that would not be practical, and with the walls, it would not, the way they would construct it would not really be that much faster, and the price was about the same. As Board members, you know, we all have a fiduciary duty, and we're looking at this project as if it's our own and coming out of our own pockets, and as our projects go on, I, my concern is that we're put, we're put a lot of money into the pool, which we absolutely have to do, but there are other needs for other students too. And I, I look at it like I have three kids, if all I put all my money into one of my children and have none less for others' needs, so I have a child who's a swimmer, plays water polo, and then I have a child who is really into the arts and needs, you know, needs our art program vamped up, and I have a child who has special needs and needs money in that area, but we're, we're tapped out. I mean, you know, in our own home budgets, we have a certain amount of money, and I worry about that, not the pool part, the pool part, but mostly the whole big plan, and, and besides the plan of adding the buildings, you know, now we're adding 30, about $30 million if we take out a loan for the environmental part of it. So it, it's just a lot of money to look at, and I'm also skeptical that students won't still be out late. I think it would be great if the city built a pool besides our pool, because there are prime times for students to use the pool, after school, you know, from, say, 3:00 to 7:00. And I'm not sure there's going to be enough of those times, but if the city has a pool, there might be, and we really might have kids home by 7:30, which would be wonderful.
So, first of all, I, I share your hope that the city also builds a pool, and I also share your concerns that we be physi, physi, fiscally, almost couldn't get that out, responsible, but we're also fortunately in a situation where we are more than adequately funding arts. I mean, it's, it doesn't feel to me like a situation where the students who like the arts and other things aren't having their needs met in the schools. We're very fortunate to be in a school district where we are extremely attentive to the broad diversity of students we have here and student interests, and we get really high marks for finding the funding for all of those things. And so, while those are important concerns, I don't see that the set-aside money for the pool, which is part of our physical plant, is taking from these other programs, so I, you know, but, but I share your concern that we be mindful of that.
It's, it's taking the $10 million out of the regular fund for this, so it is taking out of-
Which we have done over the years to fund these various special funds that we could meet our needs that are long-range. Mr. Dixon, would you-
Yeah, if I could, because I think we're confusing some programmatic issues with capital investments, and the $10 million from the potential one-time dollars, the key word there, I think, is really important, is their one-time. So you don't want to use one-time money to support a program, because programs are continuous. However, the growth in revenues associated with our local property tax is ongoing, so as we see more revenue growth from our local property tax and LCFF, that's where you really want to tap into the growth and expansion of programs, and the budget provides full flexibility, we're not using any ongoing funds to support the, the facilities projects. I really appreciate the Boards allowing us to recommend and approve using the one- and approve using the one-time funds for capital investments because that's the best way to do them. You don't want to spend one-time money on things that eat. So, and, and we're able to provide world-class facilities for our students with this, with this one-time fund. And it also shows that we have been adequately, if not generously, providing site budgets and departmental budgets that have allowed us for carryover each year. So there is flexibility to expand programs within the current budget. And that's also assuming based on a conservative revenue growth of ongoing funds as well.
I was thinking more of some capital improvements in terms of college and career. Like I know really popular classes in the Capistrano District are culinary classes and some of the woodshop classes. So I was thinking of that, that's, could be one-time funds to build a professional kitchen to put in a woodshop.
Wouldn't those be projects that we would have put onto the 10-year facilities master plan? Because we undertook very comprehensive review of the highest needs for facilities modernizations, either new facilities or upgrading facilities. So I love the idea. It's just it needs to get onto the facilities master plan first, right? So when we're looking at, say, new kitchens at the elementary schools, if we need to consider a kitchen, the teaching kitchen at the high school, we need to put that into the facilities master planning process, not onto Agenda Item 10A, right? I mean, I like the idea, though. It just seems like it's, it's misplaced. And then in regards to your comment on the arts, in the facilities master plan and the 10-year plan, we actually prioritized facility upgrades to the theater first in the process that I've been working on in the last two years. The thing that got done out of the gate was, I think, 1.3 or close to 5 million dollars of theater, 1.5, I was like, that's not right. 1.5 million dollars of, of much-needed theater upgrades. So I don't think it's prioritizing one or the other. I think it's what's most needed and what we can get done the quickest. And so if the theater needs to get done and we have the dollars, we, we do those first. If this plan is ready and we have the dollars and it's, it's high need, we do this next. So that's my two cents. And I think out of the general fund, programmatic, so keeping, you know, apples, apples and oranges, oranges on ongoing expenses. We are spending more on special education every year. We are not declining in what we're spending on, and out of our general fund on special ed programs.
In reference to a comment that Dr. Kelly made, I think that has been a misperception that's out in the community of a total amount of money because we were so inclusive in talking about our facilities master plan on projects that could cover, it's a 10-year plan. So then that a total amount gets out there as if that's what we're spending. And I've heard that misspeaking about the pool being 100 million dollar pool a number of times. So I think it's, it's difficult when that, when that happens through our inclusiveness in our planning, looking at what could be potential totals.
I'm not trying to take away from the pool, but I know on the master plan, one of the things we had was a sand volleyball court. And that got put on a back burner. And I thought the gym at Thurston and enlarging that was important. That also got put back. So.
Yeah, they're still in the master, they're on the back burner. They're in the master plan at a future date. So they're not, we have, it's a 10-year plan. So it's somewhere in the scope of the plan, right? Of where those projects fall. So the board prioritized, when you voted and approved the master plan, moving some projects to the front of the plan. And then other projects are within the plan throughout. And you did that previously when you first adopted the 10-year master plan years ago, right? In the district office, the high school counseling office. So they were, those were year nine and 10 of, and so we, at the board's direction, kind of re-engaged in those deeper conversations. That actually ultimately led to a larger conversation around the facilities master plan. And I think, Jeff, do you have an updated kind of rough number of what, when the FMP, what the board approved was not 120, 150 million dollars?
No, it was a little less than 100 million. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it was a pretty dramatically reduction in scope based on the feedback we got. But that's the intent of facility master planning processes, throw everything, every want and perceived need out there, work with the community and your, your staff and the board, and whittle it down to what is needed and how can we prioritize it. I will say, one of the reasons why the pool was when pushed forward is because that pool is the end of useful life. So we need to do something. And so you don't want to throw money at it twice.
Could I ask either for Dr. Verlooy or Mr. Dixon to address two questions I have? President Vickers, is that okay? So I did have a question on the warm water. We've heard this come up a couple of times. Showers inside, showers outside. You know, they get dirty when they're inside. They're kind of cold when they're outside. Are the showers hot outside? And are they somewhat protected, at least from the general public, where you could shower off and get into clothes and go on to something else?
Yeah, they would be connected to the hot water system. And we've worked with the design. Now, we've heard that feedback. Worked with ways to do wind shielding and ideas like that. But there are still indoor showers, one for each of the boys and girls locker room area, as well as planned for the community building as well.
Okay, wonderful. So we have external showers, which were highly, came highly recommended from community swimmers. We have internal showers. Good. And then the other question that I got from community members was on the interim plan for student athletes. So some of the questions potentially addressed were, now that we're moving closer, appears closer to schematic document approval. What is the plan for interim pool use? What types of facilities have we identified? Or how many idea, facilities? Maybe, Dr. Verlooy, you can handle this one because this is really related to the impact on our current students. And then what time they might use in their school day for that transportation elsewhere? I'm sure Kate can imagine if she was on the girls' water polo team, what does that look like in 2026?
Right, so Dr. Selby has been in regular conversations with our coaches as well as different pool opportunities that exist right now. Obviously, you have, as we are well aware in our work, have realized a lot of school districts are undergoing this process and redoing pools. So there's a lot of movement in the county related to programs kind of accepting other programs. So, for example, Newport Harbor right now is under construction. So Corona Mar has been impacted because they're taking in the Newport Harbor students in their programming. So we have reached out to several local pools and have basically handshake agreements right now. We haven't worked out specifics in terms of what the timing would look like. We would work with them, especially once the board actually moves forward with approval and we get into approval, sorry, we get into the broader discussion around timelines, we'll actually start putting pen to paper and really kind of working through that. But in talking with the coaches, none of them seemed overly concerned about finding the water that they needed and working with those fellow coaches on times. So we've been talking with two local schools in particular. One just has one program, so they have a lot more water space available. And that's Sage. And then the other is Woodbridge High School, who has a 50, they have a 50-meter pool. And they have a little more availability as well. And they're, that's about 14 miles from, from our school site here. Obviously, Sage is a little closer. And then we would work on busing. It would be one of our routes that we would, we would have. And it would get students in and out of the city in a safe manner. And again, recognizing the impact. I know last meeting when we had this discussion, there was, I think, previously, it took two years to redo the pool. Years ago, our build time is 11 months, and that's our goal. Obviously, we'd have contingency if for some reason we couldn't hit that mark. But our goal would be, you know, and that's the goal of the contractor, would be to get there, get it done in 11 months, impacting one season for each of the sports, right? So again, I think we've got it mitigated. I know our coaches will, will definitely do their due diligence as well, trying to limit the impact. I think there's a great advantage to the current bell schedule in that our athletics, the seventh and eighth period, gives our opportunity for our students in the afternoons. And that's pretty every day that they have that, that block of time. So if there is any necessary travel, that they can kind of get going and, and get going sooner rather than later. And when you have a larger pool, like a 50-meter pool, as we showed you all last meeting, there's an opportunity to hold multiple practices in spaces like that. And the water polo and swimming programs in Orange County are very reciprocal in how they work together, all in benefit of kids, right? Everyone's in the business of supporting students at schools. And so there's a lot of openness in the programs to share pool and, and water. Hopefully, I addressed your question.
Yes.
Any further discussion or we can vote? Student vote? Thank you. Board members, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you. It's been a long process. Next item is 11, another action item. Approval of contract with Good Trust to provide employees access to the Good Trust Estate Plus Plan as an ongoing employee benefit. Do we have public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. We do or we don't?
Come on up to the podium if you'd like to speak on 11A. Thank you.
I was late to the party. I just have a couple of quick questions. On, on this employee benefit, is this? So I'll ask my question, maybe you guys will answer it. Because we're not doing the, the comments first or the presentation first and then the questions, correct? We've gone back to the other way again? Is that right? Okay. Is this going to be available for all employees or just classified employees or, or certificated employees as well? I'm just curious because one of the things I'm learning is that there's, all the benefits aren't available for both, depending on the number of hours that employees are working. So I just wanted to get clarification on that. And then I understand that the endorsement was announced earlier, and that's fabulous. When I asked the question of LaBufta, how many people voted? I understand it was 100 out of 170. But I've asked the question of CSEA three times, and I have yet to get an answer on how many people voted. So I'm hoping that you'll provide that information tonight on how many people out of the 120 members of CSEA voted.
Is this on 11A?
So, yeah.
You're commenting on an agenda item on a contract with Good Trust?
Yeah. So I'm, yeah, so I'm asking questions on employee benefits and employee, if they're available for the union and for, for both unions. And then in that question, I'm asking questions of the number of union members and applicability to that, to that.
That is not part of this agenda item. The, the first question is, the second question is not.
That's okay. You've bent the rules before, too.
Any other public comment on this item? Any board questions?
Mr. Conlon, can you address this speaker's question? Does this apply to all, all employees, some employees?
Yes, it's, it's actually in the first sentence of the, of the background. So if, if you'd like, I.
No, I read that all. I was just making sure, all is all. Yes.
It's all, every single employee.
Okay, wonderful.
All employees.
Any other board questions? Let me ask for a motion, please. Remotion? Okay, any discussion? Yes. One second. Ready for vote, then? Student vote? Board members, all in favor? Aye. We lost Jim, but, so it has to be a 401. Next, we have action item 12, instructional services. Approval of Resolution Number 24-09, ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2024-25 per Ed Code 60119. Do we have public comment on this item?
Are there any speakers on 12A? Okay, I see none.
Okay. Do we have any board questions on this item?
This is a question for Dr. Mayberry. When we talk about instructional materials, this includes all other online or technological supplements to standard textbooks.
Yes, it's for the, basically the four core subjects plus more languages. And then it could be, we have to ensure that if there is online components, we have to ensure they have online access.
Any other questions? Ask for a motion, please. Okay, any discussion? If not, this is a roll call, please.
Student member Kate Hennessy. Clerk Osborne. Member Perry. Member Kelly. Member Malchesky. President Vickers.
Yes. Thank you. Action item 13, under superintendents, is approval of September 26, 2024 board meeting minutes.
Any speakers on this?
I don't see any public comment. Okay, we have, this is, we had a member absent, so we need to do it separately from consent. Okay. So we have a motion, please? On the minutes.
The minute approval.
The minutes of September 26.
Kelly can't vote.
We have a first. Do, do we, okay. So we have student vote. Thank you. Board members, all in favor? Aye. And we have an abstention. We move to consent calendar. We have consent calendar. Do we have public comment on consent calendar items C through M?
I see no speakers. Okay.
Do we, may I have a motion, please, on consent calendar items C through M? Thank you. Student vote? Board members, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. We move now to governance section. We have all of our series coming back for second reading. We will take each one separately and ask for public comment on each one. First is A, second reading and approval of board policies in the OT series. Do we have public comment on this?
President Vickers, I see no public speakers.
Thank you. We have a motion, please? Is there a second? Okay. We don't need discussion, isn't it? Second read, so. Student vote? Board members, all in favor? Aye. Carries 5-0. B, second reading and approval of board policies in the 1000 series. Do we have public comment?
I see no public comment speakers.
Thank you. Motion, please? Thank you. Can you second Jim? Okay, thank you. Student vote? Thank you. Board members, all in favor? Did I ask what?
Can I make a suggestion on one of the policies before we vote?
Sure.
Okay. We are to vote. I wanted to make a suggestion for policy 1330, which is the use of school facilities and grounds. I'd like to add either the word pool or aquatic center to the second page to go along with the playing fields, gymnasiums, track and field. Yeah, so let me tell you, fellow board members, I'm on page two of policy 1330, which is on use of school facilities and grounds. I think it would be a good, it would be a best practice to add pool or aquatic center, the board's choice, to the second paragraph where it says fees for use of facilities. The board shall adopt a comprehensive set of, schedule of fees to be charged for community use of school facilities and grounds, including, but not limited to the multipurpose rooms, playing or athletic fields, track and field venue, tennis courts, and outdoor basketball courts. I'd propose adding the word pool or pools or aquatic center to that if the board is in agreement.
You just have to amend your motion. Whoever made the motion has to amend it. Because you amend, you motion to approve. D, I think motion. So D would need to amend the motion to accept Kelly's changes.
Do you accept my changes?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. I already asked for the student vote, but I'll ask again. Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. We move to C, second reading and approval of board policies in the 2000s. We have a public comment?
I see no public speakers.
May I have a motion, please? In deference to what happened the last time, do we have any word changes coming back for second read? That's okay. Now we have student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Carrie's 5-0. We have moved to D, second reading and approval of board policies in the 3000 series. Do we have public comment?
I see no public speakers.
Okay. Motion, please? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye. Thank you. E, second reading and approval of board policies in the 4000 series? Public comment?
No speakers for the 4000s?
Thank you. Motion, please? Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Second reading and approval of board policies in the 5000 series? Do we have public comment?
See no public speakers.
Thank you. Motion, please? Student vote? Thank you. Comment?
I see none.
Thank you. Have a motion, please? I'll second this. So we have student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Carrie's 5-0. We have, aye, continued review and discussion of board policy 5131.8, mobile communication devices. Is a public comment?
I see no speakers.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So we've been having this discussion. So as you can see in the attachment, we've, based on the feedback from the last meeting, there was a request by the board to add a statement just around setting clear boundaries by age and grade levels. So we didn't call those specific boundaries out, obviously, but to allow so that there is some clarity that at the high school level, expectations around cell phone use will be different than at the K5 level, right? And that was a request that the board had asked us to add, just a statement there. And then there was also a request to add a specific statement regarding parents and guardians and their role and helping. And so as you can see, it states, parents and guardians play a crucial role in reinforcing these guidelines outside of school, ensuring that students maintain healthy habits and responsible device usage at home. By partnering with the school, families can help support their students' emotional well-being, academic success, and overall development, creating a consistent approach to managing technology use. So we had added that as a statement. If the board's comfortable with that, we can bring this back for our first read at a future meeting. Or if there's any edits or changes you wish to make, just let us know. Happy to make them.
So I'm comfortable with the language, although it does sort of imply that we would be working with parents in a bigger way about supporting technological boundaries. So I don't know what that would look like, but it seems like we've had conversations before about perhaps getting PTAs involved in doing ongoing parent education about technology use and encouraging parents as part of that to maybe also turn off screens at home so that they can encourage students. So I just think if it's in here, the district has to sort of, you know, do something with that.
Might be something that Family Resource Center could look at with either a book choice that they read or something they present.
Yeah, we typically partner every year with the elementary level PTAs around kind of bringing in whether it's a cyber cop or a different speaker on that topic. But I think it brings up a larger conversation and it's embedded in kind of some of the work that we're doing this year around what are those areas that we know need ongoing? Because oftentimes it'll be one and done, sometimes where we did that last year, recognizing that you have a whole nother group of folks, and some people might not have been able to make it. So I think there's some consistency pieces that we want to make sure that we're calling out. So I appreciate Dr. Malcheski's point around that is that, you know, when we put it in here, it's a call to action for us as well, right? And so I know the PTAs continue to play a really vital role in helping support those speakers and helping bring those folks in. But it is part of our charge at the Family Resource Center to really think holistically around all the different things that we're doing. And in conjunction with PTA, this is a topic that we know will need regular, ongoing in, as well as what we're doing around the parent or student education on this topic as well, and expectation. So more to come on that. And obviously, we'll be doing an update too onto some technology in the classroom for students at a future board meeting coming up soon, so.
I think as part of that, my last quick comment, parents want guidance. There's a lot of debate about when to give your kid a phone. Some parents do it as early as fifth grade. Some parents want to wait till eight. And I think whatever information we can provide, parents will find really helpful. And that's a good thing for the PTA to do. Like, do they want to get people in the middle school to think about like the wait to eight thing together or whatever? So anyway, enough said.
Any other comments or we can bring this back as first reading if you're comfortable with the addition?
Hi, Dr. Verlora, are you going to bring the draft policy to our PTA council?
Yes, once we're ready to bring it back for first read, once you, if you're comfortable with the way it stands, we'll bring it back to the council, let them see it and share. We shared that we were talking about it originally. And we've sent out a global message, obviously closer to the beginning of the year around this, that we were going to be, the board was going to be examining and making adjustments to the policy. So we'll work on kind of messaging that out once the board takes action tonight to kind of first read it. Obviously, it has to get through, you know, the rest of your processes for the next couple of meetings. But we'll definitely share so that we can gather any feedback and input and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think that's the most efficient way, since you have had access to all the grade levels and the leadership, and because there's such a strong connection to parenting in this particular policy, that would be really helpful to the board. And we would really like whatever feedback they have to come up then and not later.
Jim will be there as well.
Okay.
Between the two of us, we can, yes.
Okay.
Well, I think the conversation was around kind of the involvement of the parents. And then I think that was something that resonated with everybody is that was missing component to the policy. Because as Dr. Malcheski points out, and I think we've all talked about the home usage, we don't check phones out to students. So that's not something we do. We checked a Chromebook out, but we don't check phones out. And so there is a parent component far more than in any other technology piece that we don't control that they ultimately do. We can enforce rules on campuses, but how do we, and in classrooms, but how do we help our parents? And I think that's one of the things that comes up. And that's why I even said in our message that we sent out, we don't, I philosophically don't believe a student needs a phone in eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade. There are circumstances where they may. And that's a parental decision to make, obviously. But we don't require it for any kind of needs that we have of our students. And so I fully support the wait till eight and all those different topics. And I've shared that with a lot of the parents that have come and met with me on this very topic, so.
Yeah, I think for PTA, the question is, do they want to be a partner in this work? Is that their vision for their organization? And if so, then it could make its way into our policy. But we can't really say, oh, we really want to partner with our parent organizations to limit technology use as a board if they're not interested in that work. That's why I'm trying to gauge that level of interest.
Usually, the fourth district has certain topics for each year, and I don't know what they are for this year. You know if this is one of them?
Well, I know I can't speak to the fourth district topics that they're focusing on. But I think if the board has a request to add something around by partnering with the school families, and we could add some statement around PTA, like Parent Teachers Association involvement. Maybe we could come up with a sentence with them. So maybe Dr. Kelly and I can work with them and say, is there a sentence that they feel that they could commit to that we could put in?
It almost seemed to me when this first came up this year that there were, people weren't even aware that we already had a policy in place. And the policy in place really already spoke to not disturbing classroom time. So it's good that it's having a greater exposure. So this was a consensus to bring this back for first read? Thank you. Okay. We now move to government's reporting. Board member reports.
I could say lots of the reasons why I like the plan that we just approved, but I'm not, because you've all heard me say them the last two years. So no report from me.
Good luck.
You gotta be more ready.
Okay. I wanted more time from you. Okay. Beach Blitz Robotics Competition and Lego Tournament are coming up at Capo Valley High School, November 1st through 3rd. And our, some of our CCA teams are involved. They also have an elementary section, but I don't think we're involved with that. It will be livestreamed also, but I plan to go. I attended the new parent coffee, and there were almost more staff there than parents. But I ran around and tried to find the new parents. And they were, everyone I talked to, I didn't talk to any high school new parents, middle school and elementary, were just thrilled. Their kids had already settled in, they were really happy. And they, the parents had some great suggestions for our school district as far as helping kids settle in. I attended the MUN student forum for city council, and the students did an incredible job running it with very clear rules. Lily was very professional at getting the candidates to stop when they wanted to go over their time. They did allow clapping, and it went well. Also, I met with other Orange County board members and trustees about different elections coming up where candidates have huge financial backing. And some candidates are not proponents of public schools and want charter schools and private schools in place of public schools and are trying to get public school property. It was very interesting, and it made me see how fortunate we are to not be in that position in Laguna Beach that all of our candidates, I think, really care about Laguna Beach and our public schools.
I went to the PTA council and represented board. The superintendent gave a very nice summary of that, so I don't need to repeat it. The only thing I can say is that the big thing is that the membership drives are going on now. If you haven't joined, please join. It's very cheap. And they're pacing about where they were last year, and one of the schools is even ahead of themselves. Thank you.
Just very briefly, as a parent, I went to the Thurston PTA meeting, but also did a bit of reporting on what was going on with some of the board. And it was just a great discussion because so many parents showed up. It's the first meeting, that's what happens. And Joe Vidal also had a great talk with all the parents there. So that was a great discussion. Back to school night, I think, was since our last meeting. It's been a while since we met. And that was fantastic to see so many people at Thurston and really well-planned night. And I also attended the school power endowment meeting, but nothing really to report out from that.
I was able to sit in on the endowment meeting also, and it was good to be able to go back to that. My schedule had changed and allowed that. They had a couple of great events at both elementary schools with the Camp Reed event at El Moro and the Bonanza at Top of the World. They were well-attended. Of course, the Bonanza was a little bit crazy. I mean, they had a whole line of bounce house type things. But the kids were having a great time. They, I also attended the high school forum, and I thought our students did an excellent job. I think they were probably better moderators than any of the other forums. They were so on target and so professional. So I extend appreciation to Carter and to Lily and the rest of their team who took that on that civic activity for the benefit of this community. It was really an undertaking for them. And then one thing I just noticed at our public library, which was for banned book week, which was probably a couple of weeks ago now, they had books on display that were wrapped in colored butcher paper. And on the front, it might say some of the things that had been objected to on those books. But if you wanted to know what the book was, you had to check it out. So it was, it was just really making an emphasis on, I think you, probably they expected some people to be very surprised if they checked out like, you know, Tom Sawyer, and that's what they found, or the Diary of Anne Frank, because those are, have been books that have been banned in different places. But I think our local libraries really got involved in providing information on banned books. It was great. Superintendent's report.
Just briefly, and just highlight, Prop 2 is on the ballot. I would encourage all of our board members in our community to take a really close look at Prop 2. Prop 2 is the bond for education facilities. One, it's just nice to see a bond around school facilities in general. A lot of us in school districts have been in line for a while for additional funding for some of our projects. It's set aside $10 billion, but 8.5 of that actually is going to TK12. So there is a small sliver for community colleges, but the bulk of it is for schools, public schools. And it's for renovations of existing buildings. It is too, as member Perry asked about kind of CTE programs. There's some money set aside for CTE program expansion, for building expansions. There's some new construction funding in there as well. There's some support for small school districts that don't necessarily have the staff to apply for some of this. Technical assistance for some of those smalls. I mean, there's some really small districts that don't have, we're very privileged to have Jeff Dixon and Orion Zeta, who thank you to the board for allowing that, because they don't have that kind of support in their districts. So that's also in there as well. But we're in a great position if it was to pass because the board has been kind of keeping in front of a lot of our facilities program needs. And then we have a 10-year facilitial master plan. We already have projects that we could identify that would definitely fit that mark and that we could kind of move forward with. So I think it's a great thing for people to look at. As Dr. Kelly says, make sure you vote. And, but familiarize yourself with that bond. And I would hope that folks would take that time to see that. And there is advantages to our school district if it does pass.
Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn? Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Thank you.